9:00 AM, and we have all three commissioners present. I will open our meeting, and we'll start with introductions. I'm Zan Ojero. Commissioner.
I'm Malone, Commissioner.
Anthony Wise, Commissioner. Don't be shy, Gary.
Gary Stockoff, Public Works Director.
Kate Corvall, Benton County, Department of Spelman Office.
Catherine Duval, Corvall, Benton County, Department of Spelman Office.
Johan Hidde, Pronouns, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Coordinator.
Teresa Farley.
Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Rich Spofford, Road Manager.
I'm Heath Kerstedt, She, Her, Hers, and I'm with Benton Soil and Water Conservation District.
Thank you. Are there any announcements this morning? I would like to acknowledge the fact that we are convened here on Caliponia land, and that we respect that heritage in all of our efforts to treat the land right. So, thank you for that. Are there any comments from the public? Okay, we will now review and approve the agenda. This morning's agenda, we would like to add an executive session under "Other," and that will be led by Nick Kirth, Joe Kirby, and Vance Cronin. And we, there is a little bit of a chance that 4.4 might be withdrawn, but I'm hoping that we will continue to keep it on the agenda to discuss the Second Chance Act Pay for Success Initiative Grant. So, with that, will now be recorded.
Sorry, I hate to interrupt.
I would accept a motion to approve the agenda.
Salute.
Second, second. All in favor, signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we will move on to our work session, and the first item of business is our annual report from Benton Soil and Water Conservation District. Heath.
Great. I have a presentation, and so when I am able to share my screen out, I'm ready for that.
And I should acknowledge that Gary and Rich are also here for this presentation.
Okay, can you see it?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, I already introduced myself. I'm Heath Kerstedt. I'm the Communications and Community Engagement Manager for Benton Soil and Water Conservation District. Usually, this report will be given by our River Restoration and Invasive Species Program Coordinator, but that position is empty at this moment, so I'm filling in. Thanks for having me here to report on the IGA between the county and Benton SWCD. Have to put my cursor on the right screen. Okay, so, to provide context for this IGA, and so that you have a fuller picture of the ways Benton SWCD provides services related to invasive species awareness and control in Benton County, I'll cover a brief history of our IGA, updates from the 2020 IGA, and updates on other programs and projects Benton SWCD coordinates that provide invasive outreach and control efforts in the county. So, the purpose of the IGA is to work together efficiently on cooperative efforts that help both parties meet our goals. In the past, the IGA centered around the Fish Passage Program, and if you'd like more information about the Fish -- that is the hardest thing to say, the Fish Passage Program, you can find the maps and other information archived on our website at the link that I provided here. Currently, we're doing more invasive species kind of projects together, so we're training for the Public Works, the road crew staff, weed polls, and consultation on invasive species, and then providing educational resources. We receive $5,000 a year for those services. So, these are the main components of the IGA. We provide a training that's bimonthly for the road crew. It was a bimonthly in-person presentation before the pandemic, but it shifted, and I'll talk a little bit about that soon. We do weed polls in special management areas. We're supposed to do it per year. We offer educational resources. We create an annual report, which we should have received probably a couple months ago, and then we do this presentation. So, the bimonthly presentations are on early detection, rapid response to invasive species, for the most part, and sometimes they're on species that are found in the rice of way, that there's like a bad time to mow them, or something like that. So, it gives the road crew more information what to look for and better or best management practices for trying to increase familiarity with those species for the people who are out and about seeing them. And we held interactive trainings in the past, as I said. In this year, we switched over to a different system. And, oh, I didn't realize these were going to pop up. And so, what we've created are these alerts, invasive species alerts. They're like posters, and they're, we've been sharing them with the public works. But the really nice thing about them is that we are also able to share them through our social media, which has led to several community reports of infestations that we didn't know about before. And I put in here the address of our, on our website, where you can find all of them. There are quite a few of them now. Another part of the agreement includes holding weed polls in the special management areas. We usually recruit OSU student volunteers, but in 2020, Jennifer Ward and Laura Brown hand-pulled 200 pounds of meadow knappweed in the special management area that's adjacent to Lupin Meadows in Palomos. So, as I understand it, there was supposed to be a second weed poll that would have happened along Tampico Road, where there's also an infestation of, I guess it's meadow knappweed there too. But that was deemed a lower priority because of COVID, so that one didn't occur this past year. Another thing that we provide is that we also create and distribute educational resources through various programs and media. So, here are some of the different ways and takes that we offer. So, we offer support for identification. Oftentimes, people call the district or bring in a plant to the district for us to help them identify. If, sometimes it's native plants, sometimes it's invasive plants, sometimes it's just a weed or something like that. And then we offer potential control options. We have lots of literature on that and information on our website. We also do, through the Willamette Mainstem Cooperative, we do outreach, and we also do on-the-ground control and restoration projects through the WMC. We have online weed profiles. I don't know if you've ever needed to look up what's that weed, but we do have a place on, like a database on our website, where you can look up all sorts of different, there's a huge number of different invasive species listed there. And this year, we updated our waterweed guide, so it's like, I guess it's now probably the third edition. At this time, we included native and invasive look-alikes. So, there are a whole bunch of different species in there. Eighteen aquatic weeds that are of concern for Benton County. And then on the opposite page, the, so like on the left page would be the invasive plant, and on the right page would be the look-alike. So, that's a nice new feature. And you could find it online, but also if you wanted a copy of it and you don't have one, just let me know, and I can, we have some at the office, print copies that are on paper that's water-resistant, so you can take it out on the river with you. So, just to provide a little more context there for how we support invasive outreach and control in Benton County, we have other programs in areas where we do invasive work. We have, we coordinate the Benton County Cooperative Weed Management Area and the Willamette Mainstem Cooperative, and we provide landowner assistance with funding from Oregon Department of Agriculture. So, the Cooperative Weed Management Area was established in 2012, and with a large group of local resource management partners. And it has a defined geographic area, which is Benton County, which is really nice. Before, we were part of a larger, a three-county Cooperative Weed Management Area, and so that was a little bit harder to get information and focus really on topics that are of concern here locally. It was mostly focused on stuff happening in Eugene. So, this was a way to respond to that kind of gap, was to create the CWMA. It facilitates collaboration across jurisdictional boundaries, and it increases the effectiveness of invasive plant management efforts. Here's a list of the partners in the Cooperative Weed Management Area. You can see that Benton County Public Works and Natural Areas are both partners. So is the City of Corvallis and the City of Palomos. Other nonprofits are also partners, and state agencies. So, it's been a really nice partnership. The partners meet two to three times a year to share updates and learn about invasive plant species and control methods, and to develop collaborative projects. For example, we usually hold an annual Let's Pull Together Volunteer Weed Poll event, and that's held at multiple locations across the county, and many volunteers participate. It's just been growing every year since it started. So, through the Cooperative Weed Management Area, we provided virtual education opportunities. In 2020, usually, we would hold in-person things, but back in March, Laura trailblazed the district's way into virtual learning with her Italian aram removal demonstration that she livestreamed on Facebook. And it was just her, in her backyard, digging out some Italian aram. It was pretty, it was pretty fun. And we also offered a virtual Let's Pull Together Ivy Removal livestream on Facebook for the Governor's Weed Awareness Week. Now, that was held in place of what would have been a Let's Pull Together event with, that we would have had tons of volunteers getting together. That happens in May. And current basis in your backyard webinars received 156 views, which is so much more exposure than we would have gotten by holding small in-person events in different neighborhoods, which is what we had planned to do. And so, maybe we would have gotten, oh, 40 or so people at three different in-person events, but instead, 156 people participated in the webinar. So, there's something to be said for virtual offerings. A couple different species to highlight this year, or last year. Italian thistle started popping up in the gravel mulch used in downtown Corvallis's parking lots. So, Laura got organized a volunteer weed poll in March, just before everything shut down. We're likely to continue holding these events until Italian thistle is eradicated from downtown Corvallis's parking areas and public garden sets, so when we're able to, again, not right now. But you can see where they're located by the distinctive mural. And I went to that event with my kids, and it was, it was really fun to be part of a little weed poll in such a public place, where people were walking by and seeing what we were doing and asking questions. So, another species that's worthy of note is Oblongspurge. This is the largest Oblongspurge site infestation in Oregon, and we have the honor in Benton County of having. It's about an acre and a half, and it is somebody who was the wife of a landscaper, saw our Facebook post about Oblongspurge, and showed the plant to her husband, and he knew from his landscaping job where a large patch was. And before that, the largest site in Oregon was at the penitentiary in Salem. They've checked the properties around the site in Benton County and haven't found any more Oblongspurge growing in those other sites. So, there, another site was found of Oblongspurge in, sorry, in Benton County, and that person liked the plant so much that they were giving the seeds away at their wedding. So, it would be interesting to see where in the world those Oblongspurge plants pop up. Now, they know that that wasn't a good idea, so hopefully, they're letting the people that they gave the seeds to know about it. But it's just a great example of how getting, doing the outreach can help stop problems from becoming out of control. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Willamette Mainstem Cooperative. It coordinates on-the-ground riparian and aquatic habitat restoration efforts that have been heavily focused on invasive removal so far. So, it's a group of private and public landowners and volunteers, nonprofits, state agencies, et cetera, that work together to improve stewardship of the Willamette River, and the focus is in the reach between Corvallis and Albany. Here's a list of the partners. As you can see, it's a large group of partners that have been involved in this effort. I think it got started back in maybe 2011, and then in 2012 and 2013, we started out the effort by doing surveys of that river reach, especially the riparian area, and those were coordinated, and we found ludogia, yellow floating heart, and we've been controlling the ludogia, water primrose, the yellow floating heart, and ivy since 2014. So, here are a few outreach events that Laura created for 2020. We had to go virtual this year because of the pandemic. So, I was really impressed with the number of events that she came up with, and different ways that people could engage in river protection and invasive removal, even without getting together with a large group. So, on this slide, here's the poster on the right for the Love Your River event that we offered. And on the left are screenshots of the two virtual, one was a training, and one was, the top one was a training by Rich Miller from Portland State University on how to identify aquatic plants. And then Laura and I floated down the river and visited some of the restoration sites where she's been doing, well, her program's been doing restoration and invasive control. Right here, she's just walked, we walked up from Willamette Park, just upstream a little, well, downstream a little bit, and this patch right here is yellow floating heart, which is removable by hand, but also treatable with chemicals. Sometimes, it's really hard to get all the roots out, and you have to get all the roots out. So, both of those videos can be seen on our YouTube channel, so if you just go to YouTube and search Benton SWCD, you can watch those videos. We also offer different ways for people to, since we couldn't offer the in-person floats and weed polls, we held several like on-your-own river outreach opportunities. One was a river weed poll, where people would contact Laura, and she'd give them some locations on the river where they could float to, and then pull weeds. This is actually a picture of some folks that participated in that weed poll, with their, just, I think it's brothers and a mom that went. Then, we had an opportunity, a raffle, where you could just snap a picture of your feet by the water's edge and submit that, and be entered into raffles. And then another raffle that was kind of like identify the invasive plants found along the river to, in a bingo, and that was another one that if you submitted your bingo card, you could enter in a raffle too. So, finally, our, we have our two resource conservationists, which is a new thing. We used to only have one resource conservationist, but now we have two, Donna Schmidt and Teresa Madison, who provide technical assistance and advice to private landowners in Benton County. This often includes information, sharing information on invasive species, identification, control methods, et cetera. If you ever know anybody who needs a site visit, just send them our way, and we can have Donna or Teresa go out and talk to folks about, you know, their conservation needs. All right, thank you. That's all I have for today. I wanted to mention that we're hiring for a new position that will coordinate the Invasive Species Program and Willamette Mainstem Cooperative. It's, the new position's called Natural Resource Conservation Program Manager, and we just posted it on our website yesterday, so you can find the job announcement at the website I've listed here. And thanks for your continued partnership.
Thank you, Heath. Are there any questions for Heath?
I have a couple of questions. I have an easy one. I'll start off with that. Heath, what's the status of the annual meeting?
Oh, we held the annual meeting on January 11th, and it was virtual. It was a one-hour meeting. And we had a presenter who is our guest blogger for the year on bird, and bird gardening topics, Lauren Farr, whom Laura actually found for us during the time when the Black Birders Week was happening. So, that was really fun to have her present for us and talk about some of her research. And we also shared our conservation neighbors. So, we have about 20 or so conservation neighbors, and we keep adding to our list. So, if you're interested, Pat, I can send you the email I sent out after that meeting that has the conservation, a link to the conservation neighbors, and also a link to the presentation that Lauren did for us. It doesn't have, it's not a recording, it's just the slides. I could not figure out how to get it to record. I thought it was recording, and I never could find it afterwards. So, that's what we did, a one-hour virtual meeting.
Okay. And I appreciate you talking about the weed, virtual weed polls, and in some ways may have worked better than what you had in mind in the first place. And I think there's going to be a lot of those kind of discussions this year about how we used to do it in the old days, a year ago, versus what we've done in the past year, and, but take the best out of both going forward. But that was encouraging, that you got more participation because it was virtual. And I'm sure you have enough on your plate, and this question isn't necessarily just for you, but there was no talk about invasive insects. And we have plenty of, I think, the Emerald Ashbore. And it would be nice if there was more awareness, how to identify. I think it's not here yet, but it's headed our direction, and it would be nice, some of the bull that were out and about, identify that critter.
That's a, that's a great point, Pat. And I, I've been, since the pandemic started, I've been sending out a weekly e-news, and it goes to about 700 people right now. And so, I'd be happy to do one on Emerald Ashbore, and we could do some of the other insects in upcoming ones, too. The cooperative weed management is specifically for plants. Not, they have other versions of that that are more like a cooperative invasive species management area. And that's not what we chose to go with when we got started. But it's totally true, I agree with you, that we need to do outreach on those insect species and other kinds of invasives that come our way.
Oh, great, thank you. And it's nice hearing what you're up to, and I have fond memories of being on the board.
Yeah, we miss you. We have a bunch of new districts, what do you call it, directors right now. We have the new Zone 5 Director, and we have three We have the new Zone Five Director and we have three, this year we added three new, not, yeah, associate directors. I was getting confused because there's at-large and associates, but, so, and one is a student associate director from OSU, who's in water management. So it's really neat to be able to open up and get more people on our board. Miss the old folks, we used to be there.
Are there any other questions for Heath? Heath, I wanted to comment that the materials that you all put together during the pandemic look fantastic, very engaging. I would definitely be interested in learning more about some of the activities you're doing. So I will go to the website and sign up for your e-newsletter.
Okay.
And I would also welcome either Rich or Gary to comment this time on the IGA and the partnership and thoughts about future in terms of how this is working for us in terms of the collaboration.
I don't know if I will hold out, Commissioner, just other, we appreciate the partnership. Obviously, a lot of it is with Rich's group and as he said, this has been an interesting year with the pandemic and how we've had to do business. But, you know, they still work closely with the road crews and doing what they do there. I will also say that Jennifer Ward obviously has been a part of this effort as well and we appreciate what she does to help coordinate it all as well, so.
Are there any other questions for Heath about the Benton Soil and Water Conservation District and the partnership with the county? I have just one last question, Heath. In terms of oblong spurge, what is its, what, what does it functionally do that impedes our native ecosystems?
From what I understand, oblong spurge creates like a big, it'll just form a mat, like a big monoculture. And so it'll just take over habitat from other things that would be able to live there. So you'll see big, like, you know, an acre and a half infestation, stuff like that. So nothing else is really growing.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Please give our best to all of your colleagues back at the Soil and Water Conservation District and appreciate the partnership.
Me too. It's great to see you all.
The next item of business, 4.2, is our quarterly report from the Corvallis Benton Economic Development Office. And yes, Commissioner Malone.
I think we, we need a motion to accept the annual report.
We haven't typically done that, but if you would like to do so, I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
I would move to accept the Benton Soil and Water Conservation District annual report.
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, Kate and Catherine.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner. So nice to see you. I'm going to go over just some quick information for you. I didn't want to spend too much time because I know all of you have heard this information in different forums, so I'm just going to kind of hit the high points for you and maybe save you a bit of time on your agenda this morning. But we did want to pass on to you our quarterly report. This is for the second quarter of fiscal year 2021. And as you all know, it's a requirement of our contract that we send on information about all the work that our team is doing. And on that note, I always like to remind, we were just in front of city council last week, and I'd just like to remind folks that everything that you hear about that we do, we do with our small but mighty team of 3.5 FTE. And that of course includes me, Jerry Sordi is our economic development supervisor, Heather Stevens, and Catherine Duval as economic specialist. And with that too, I wanted to pause, you're going to get to hear from Catherine a little bit later, but I did want to introduce Catherine in case those of you maybe have not met her. Catherine, you want to pop on? There she is. Catherine joined our team a year ago and interestingly enough, came on, she's a fellow NTP graduate from OSU like me, and came on to help with a lot of different projects, but some of our climate action work. And then the irony is like, what Catherine, two weeks after you started, the pandemic came on and the EOC stood up. And literally to this day, we still have yet to have a Climate Action Advisory Board meeting. She's met with leadership and of course, but just to let you know how different our work has been over this year. But let me pause there, Catherine, do you want to just say hello briefly?
Hi, yeah, it's nice to be here with you all this morning, Commissioners. And I'm actually back at the EOC this week, so the background may look familiar.
Indeed. And Catherine has an update according to that she'll share at the end, some happy news. So real briefly, I think you all are aware, but of course, our portfolio, the 3.5 of us, we are all technically city employees, but we continue to be grateful for the contributions that Benton County makes toward our work, which works out to be about 25% of our office's budget. And that money, of course, pays for the work that we do throughout all of Benton County. And I think that structure has worked really well. I just, I guess I want to mention that briefly to say it has created unification, I think, across the county and especially during times like this crisis. I think having a sole source at the county level has really helped to pull folks together and create strong line of communication. So we, we appreciate the opportunity to do this work and I think it's benefited the county well. Of course, as we said, everything's changed, I know you guys, everyone's heard that, since March, we basically exclusively been working on emergency response and recovery. And I haven't mentioned this before, but I'll mention it again. I think, you know, Benton County had pulled us into the EOC early. It was Catherine from the very beginning and then I joined in. We were both over there through the entire summer, through September, and now back again. And Heather is going to be brought in this time. She did not participate last time because she was expecting and therefore vulnerable, so we didn't want to have her at the EOC. But the point being, not every county has business partners at their emergency operations center, and I think it really benefited you well. And to point out how unusual it is, I will mention our emergency manager, Dave Busby, who I know you all know, he is on the board of the Oregon Emergency Management Association. They just had a conference and he invited me to come speak on the benefits of looping in your business partners into emergency operations. And so I guess I'd prefer to say like, not everybody's doing it this way and it's a great idea that even Dave thought was worthy of sharing across the state. So real quick, I just want to hit some highlights from the summary document that I sent over. And what was in your packet was a brief staff report, our summary document, and then that whole big gnarly spreadsheet, which is pretty detailed, that that's where we go to track all the different work items. But really, the bulk of what I want to talk to is just in the, in the summary document. So a couple items, the PPE delivery, Catherine and Heather jumped in and took that over. This is PPE that we received from Business Oregon. It was seven pallets of PPE, and so I put in some numbers there for you, 80,000 mats, 20,000 gloves. And on the very last page of that report, you can see some fun pictures of Heather and Catherine. We basically took over the Madison Avenue meeting room and they structured in a way though, where we had different pickup days, they structured a contactless pickup system that just went really, really well and we got a lot of positive feedback. They used that as an opportunity to check in with businesses, you know, ask them how they're doing, get them connected with other resources if they would need them. Another big part of our work and continues to be and I think will be going forward is funding. I've outlined here, these are all the different funding pieces that we've handled since the first quarter. We did just get notification that the round three Business Oregon, those are the $5,000, that is now closed out. So both Mary and Robert have the information they need to document that we're, we're all square with Business Oregon on that. We did just last week receive from Community Lending Works, a list of the demographics. And in fact, I haven't even had a chance to tell Catherine, but we've got this, it's a raw list. And what we'd like to do is aggregate that data and give you guys some broad brush strokes of the demographics from the governor's, 1.25 million round, and then that local business round, that 260, just so you guys can get a flavor. I will say, we do know that 90% of the applicants in those two rounds were fit the demographic, those four categories that we were really aiming and hoping to reach, 90% applicants were in those four. And again, that is minority owned businesses, businesses that were forced to close by one of the governor's executive orders, businesses in events or event related industries and rural businesses. So really, we, we cast that net purposely and really that's, that's the folks we got. But we'll be able to break it down a little further for you and have that information. We did get all the Carisak money out the door and this took a lot of different forms in terms of even the small business law clinic that Catherine helped to put together to help low-income business owners with legal issues they may be having, helping fund the outdoor tents for businesses, things like that. And on the next page, you know, a big part of what we do is touching businesses, you know, reaching out to them. And I think as you guys know, our typical goal in a year is 150 business touches. And already in just quarter one, quarter two, we're at 562, which is on pace to actually beat our 901 last year. But again, I think it's just continued contact, PPE money, making sure folks have what they need. So I expect that number to stay very high through the pandemic. Heather has done a great job. She handles our media and outreach and she's been tracking, we're able to track with our newsletter that we send, how many folks actually open the newsletter, which I think is really helpful data. And so we put that in there for you. So far, quarter one, quarter two, we've had 2,500 open of the newsletter, not just send. So again, we're really feeling good that people are receiving that, they're opening it, looking at it, scanning to see what they need. Other than that, I mean, those were really the biggies that I wanted to hit on the summary document. I will say, again, the lines of communication I think are working very well for us, both downstream. We continue to hold our Benton County meetings with all of our partners, with the Two Chambers of Commerce and Billy Coach and all those partners who have been so, so invaluable. We, Benton County would not have been able to do what we've done without these strong partnerships. I mean, it's truly been amazing and wonderful to see everybody coming together. And again, I can tell you, it is not like this in every county. So we're just really lucky to be where we are with the partners we have. And we thank them every day. But we continue to do that. And of course, upstream, you know, having, having Catherine and Heather at the EOC, having access to the larger regional conversations that are going on, and then even access up to the governor's office through our regional solutions team, incredibly helpful because then as we have specific issues, we can raise those up and then we've got the information to disperse down. I do want to speak briefly about equity. It begins, it continues to be an item that we are intentional about, that we are purposeful about. We have learned great lessons as we've gone and we've still got opportunities to learn more. But again, with an example of the funding, really being thoughtful about the way we write the policies for these funding programs, setting them up as a lottery rather than a first come, first served program that we know affluent white folks tend to be first in line for, right? That's not the most equitable way to get the money out the door. So we continue to really look for ways to produce materials. You all may know this, but Catherine is also a Spanish speaker, which has benefited our team greatly. We appreciate it so much. So she's able to translate information, she's been on the phone and out talking with our businesses. And also shout out to our friends in public health, right? They have really set up, Catherine and Rocio have been working together to make connections in the Latinx community and it's, it's really helpful. But again, I want to mention that because this is a, this is not a, an item where you just arrive and it's all perfect. Like we're continuing to work on this and continuing to work with an eye toward how we can engage better and more purposefully. So looking forward, past COVID, which I know right now seems, seems hard to think about, I will, I will mention, I don't know if you guys are feeling it, our team is feeling a little bit like Eye of the Hurricane. We've had a little bit through December, January, a little bit of a downtick, but now with the new administration at federal level, we believe there's going to be more funding, more stuff coming in. And of course, as the work of EOC is going up with the immunization, we think there's going to be another big push to get through the other side of this. So we've been using this little bit of downtime to do some forward thinking. So post-COVID, we've got a couple of different things. One, as you all know, you're coming to the end of your biennial cycle, we've matched our annual, our biennial work plan to match your cycle. So we'll be working on drafting a new two-year work plan. The city council has expressed an interest in a focus on downtown vibrancy, which we think is wonderful. And that was already in our wheelhouse, but something we want to be purposeful about for us. So that means of course, not just supporting Corvallis, but helping our friends in the other communities. For example, pre-COVID, we were in conversation with Adair Village about potential for an urban renewal district and we'd like to help Pat Care and his folks get that going, really excited about that. Work on the annexation of the Airport Industrial Park, we think that's going to be really important. Jerry and Catherine have been to work on that. And as I already mentioned, our continued work on finding new and better ways to support our women, minorities that are businesses in Benton County. And finally, being purposeful, I think it's a little longer term project, but being thoughtful about finding and carving out industrial and manufacturing space. So we're having conversations with the university, we've been having a couple of biospace needs conversations and really starting to lay the foundation. I think what that's going to look like is continuing to look for grant funding where we can do some feasibility studies, get a plan, and then begin working toward this. But I think doing that work now, laying that groundwork will be farther down the line in the next, you know, three to five years. So just a couple takeaways and then I'll let Catherine share her wonderful happy news. I think we, like everyone, we're so excited about the idea of getting back to normal, right? But I think what I want to share with you is that our normal work will be a new normal. And I think I saw Sean pop up on the call too, and I think that ties into some of these projects. This notion of maybe the silver lining, I like to think I'm a silver lining person. And we've come out of this pandemic, which means we have this enormous opportunity to think about what we've been doing and how maybe we want to do it differently, how we want to do it better, right? And so I, I think what I want to share is when I'm thinking about our next two-year plan, I'm thinking about how we want to rebuild differently, how I want to strengthen and do our work with an eye towards solving the climate issues that faces. Do our work with an eye towards creating greater equity, creating greater prosperity for everyone in Benton County and be really purposeful about that in, in the task that we choose to work on. And the last item that I'll leave you with before Catherine takes it away is, I said it before, but I want to remind you, I think sometimes we are in the work and maybe don't realize, but I wanted to say it again, like Benton County is a special, special place. And that is, thanks in part to the partnerships that we have, the collaboration, the collaborative environment where everybody just jumps in and it's not about ego or silos, it's about how can we help, what do we need to get done? And the communication, quite frankly, the dedicated professionals that you have both at the city and the county and at our partner organizations who are just working so hard to, to help all the folks, whether they're businesses or people, in, in the best way we can during this crisis. And it's just so, I don't know, it's really heartening and I know you guys know that, but I just want to tell you again, because I'm seeing examples and I'm hearing stories from colleagues that work in other communities. And it's, like I said, it's not this way everywhere and I, I'm just really grateful for, for what we have here and I wanted to make sure you guys knew it too. So with that, let me, let Catherine talk about her exciting news that she wants to share.
Okay, thank you, Kate, and good morning, everyone. So our office applied for a grant back in August. We were made aware of a particular grant for electric mobility. The range of, of projects that we could choose was really wide and we decided to go with an e-bike program for low-income residents of Benton County. Yeah, and I remember we were back here in August, which is the current going now, when we were applying to the program. And we put it together pretty quickly with help from a lot of our partners in the community and across the county and the city, trying to get feedback as fast as we could to make a competitive proposal. And we found out in December that we were awarded the full grant amount that we asked for, which is $60,000. And we went before city council last week on Tuesday to get the resolution approved and formally accept the grant. So we're just working on getting the contract signed for that and hopefully we'll have all of that done by the end of January. So we don't have a ton of details yet for you and if you have And I do have to come back in a few months and talk about that when we have more of it ironed out. But what we do know is that we were approved for the whole $60,000. We're hoping that that will provide enough funds. Our goal is for subsidies for 40 to 70 people to be able to purchase electric bicycles throughout the county. So they must, they have to be specific power residential customers. Other than that, we decided to focus on low-income residents because we really felt, adding on to Kate's comments about equity, just the opportunity for economic advancement for low-income residents to be able to have an electric bicycle for transportation for people who either can't drive for any number of reasons or can't afford a car. And there have been a lot of studies that have shown that people who have e-bikes do actually travel farther, so they use them for trips that they might not otherwise be able to make. So one of the reasons that our office really thought that this was a good fit for us because it provides more economic opportunity for a lot of people. And of course, a lot of low-income people tend to be more far-flung from city center and from resources. So it's harder for them to, sometimes to get access to health resources, cultural resources, education resources. So we, the subsidy amounts are still to be determined, but we're hoping that they'll be maybe anywhere from $700 to $1,000, which is where our range is pretty big right now. We also need to factor in the cost of all the safety equipment and any safety training. So those details are still in flux. But the idea is that by late spring or early summer, we'll be able to start rolling out the program and start really just working with the local bike shops here pretty soon to see how this all fits in. And we've already actually had some interest after the city council meeting last week. We've already reached out. So we're thinking this is going to be a pretty popular program. And I can't, is there any questions you have? Or you can always come back at another meeting at a later date when we know more. Go ahead.
Catherine, on the e-bikes, and my information is from regular bikes, but I guess partly because of the pandemic, bikes are in short supply. Have you checked with our local bike shops and make sure you get on their list?
Yes, Commissioner, that's a very good point. And we did reach out to them when we were applying for the program to ask them about their, just to see which local bike shops carry e-bikes and would be willing to participate as a preliminary measure. And we got a response from quite a few of them that they would be able to participate. And so that is another, that's something that could delay the program a little bit, but we have, it's an 18-month timeline, so we have through summer of next year to finish the project. So I think we're pretty optimistic that we will be able to get bikes for everyone by that time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Nancy.
Not a question per se, but I'm, I'll just express that I am very happy and excited to hear about this program. And yes, it just makes me feel like, one more great thing about living in Benton County, not every community does stuff like this. And I know all of you folks over at the Economic Development Office are busy. I know that you could justify saying, oh, we just have so much other work to do. We don't have time to do stuff like this. So thank you for going the extra mile for our community and getting this done. I really appreciate that. I know our community does too. Especially last I heard, you know, the COG had that bike share program that went away and I didn't care if it ever got resurrected, but you know, that left a hole, you know, and some needs in our community. So I'm really excited to hear about this program. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. And I want to thank you that we have put together a work group of a few partners across the community who are just volunteering their time to help us get all the details figured out. And so we're really thankful for all the partnerships that we have too. We had full home support for this, so it's very positive going forward.
I would like to note too, that Ryan Vogt from the COG is on the line. So hopefully he will be able to chime in a little bit more about the future of their program as we roll into their report. I too would like to thank all of you from the Economic Development Office for your incredible work this last year. I'm thrilled that you all have been part of the Emergency Operations Center and that we've been able to work hand in hand on the economic and the health-related aspects of the pandemic. I think it's made us a lot stronger. And I look forward to seeing how that will influence the development of the next two-year plan for Economic Development Office for Corvallis and Benton County. I think that you, the work you've done has been great. So I'm also looking forward to an update on the strategic partnerships and how they are working to support the effort because clearly, three and a half people can't do it all. And you've only been able to do this with that network of people here in Corvallis and across the county. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about how that shapes up as we move forward.
Yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned that, Commissioner O'Driscoll. I did want to mention, in this packet was also the report from Small Business Development Center. And I just wanted to remind you, the tweaked rate contract is a little bit, so they'll have a semi-annual report forthcoming at the end of January. And my thought is that you, what we'll do is use our next quarterly update as an opportunity to get them in front of you. I think you, y'all hear from me plenty, but I thought it'd be nice to just have them come in front of you, hear from them directly about the work they're doing. And then we'll, you know, be having conversations about what that work looks like, what those partnerships look like as we begin to formulate the next plan and the next set of funding cycles. Yeah, thank you.
That sounds good. We haven't heard directly from them since Charlie left the SBDC. Be great to highlight some of the partners' work as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there other questions for Catherine and Kate? Yes.
Not a question, just a comment and backing up your comments saying, I really appreciate Kate, you and your mighty crew scrambling through last year to find out what the latest dollar amounts in the program coming in and a lot of confusion and working through that. And I really appreciate last spring, the thoughtful approach to getting the dollars out. And it wasn't first come, first served like some other counties did. And in 15 minutes or an hour or whatever, the money's all gone. And 20 people were funded and 200 were left behind, kind of numbers that we were able to learn from others, to get experience in that lottery approach, I think, has really, you know, served us well. And appreciate you folks figuring out the best way to distribute money throughout Benton County and not just seeing how fast you can get rid of the dollars so you can move on to the next project. But really appreciate the scramble that was 2020. And I'm predicting this year will be calmer, maybe like a lot of people mentioned that we're not going to get back to how it was a year ago. But and sometimes we've learned that our job's better. So I'm looking forward to a calmer, maybe more predictable year with a flip here and there of, oh, there's the deadline. But really appreciate you, the job that you've done for us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Really appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you. Really appreciate the quarterly report and looking forward to the next round of planning and hearing from partners.
Wonderful, thank you all.
Thank you. Moving forward, item 4.3 is our quarterly update from the Cascades West Council of Governments and that's in services for Benton County. That's Ryan Vogt and C.W. Nelson, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you so much for having us today. It is great to be here. Oh, am I freezing up on you? Okay, good. It's great to be here. I've been the director for the Cascade Council of Governments for a number, a handful of months now. And the first time I've appeared in this forum. So it is great to see all three of you in one place. And so I did provide a report. This was a summary of a board meeting as well as some information to Benton. It's intent to deep dive into that unless there's questions related to it. And but I did have a handful of things to cover around what has been going on at the COG for the last number of months since I've been on. Before I get, I will ask if there's any questions to stick to what's on the report. Commissioner Wise, there is a, in there on a new bike share. So thank you for those comments earlier. We did have our bike share vendor, our previous bike share vendor was not sustainable. And but we recognize how important of a service that it is. And so we have launched a project on that. And we are still going through the logistics, actually, with the existing bicycles that are out there and getting them removed and moved. Consultation with the vendor on that.
Excellent. And I see that there's also been a lot of progress on some of our other programs. I'm looking forward to seeing the area development on aging plan for the next five years. And I'm happy to see the progress in terms of grant applications for the Stand By Me program for financial wellbeing among our more disadvantaged groups. And it sounds like there's some exciting grant opportunities on that front.
There is definitely some exciting opportunities there and we are very hopeful on that one. That one's coming up quickly and we're working through some logistics to try and make sure we can get our application in for that one. So thank you for the comments on that. So if it's all right with you, I'd like to just give you a brief snapshot into what the last couple of months have looked like and where we're focusing at the moment. As I moved into the organization, we were experiencing kind of a substantial amount of executive turnover. The, probably the seven or eight months before I came on board, we turned over a substantial portion of our executive team and we transitioned into a mobile workforce with the onset of COVID. So we were experiencing quite a few cultural issues when I came on board. Working very hard to try and shore a lot of that up. Our IT infrastructure was ill-prepared from a number of years of neglect to actually handle that. And we now have made strategic investments that have stabilized our IT infrastructure, which has allowed us to be really productive with about 85% of our staff working from site over the right now. I am really happy to announce, you saw that at the very beginning of the report that I provided, that we have new community and economic developer on board. Her name is Glass. If you haven't met her, she's been on for about five weeks now. I know she has already met Kate. And it's very, very exciting for providing a level of stability to that division and new creative energy to that area. It was important to me that as we navigated who was going to be coming on board, that we were investing in a position for the future. And Jenny definitely has the chops for doing that. Jenny also shares our agency's emerging passion and kind of some of my passion around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And she has been for a number of years as an executive director of a nonprofit organization, really bringing voice to a disadvantaged community in the Portland area. And I think that this is going to pay dividends throughout our region as we focus differently on economic development, much in line with the kind of conversation that Kate was having around intentional focus on how we bring different voice to the table for economic development and how we consider differently the populations throughout the region to make sure that we're providing equitable service delivery. So I'm very excited about that. I'm also candidly a little bit excited that that means I'm no longer splitting duty between being the division director and the executive director and can begin to focus a little bit differently on being the director of the organization. So more to come there. And along the lines of economic development, we also have extended an offer through our economic development funds for a resilience position. This is coming in from the federal level for the next two years, having somebody to focus on small business stability, regional economic resilience. The person that we're bringing in, since they're not on board yet, so I'll make the announcement, but the person that we've extended has a number of small businesses and is a key player in all business administration work. And so I think she will be a comfortable fit coming in to help move our region forward with economic stability. As obviously a gap that all of us have realized, that pandemic has kind of waged war across the region and across the nation and across the world, that planning for these types of events for the future is a key. And then I also wanted to speak just briefly about our ongoing work with the Community Service Consortium before I hand it to you for this. I know Commissioner Paul's the Community Services Consortium Board and Commissioner Malone sits on the COG Board. And this is an ongoing dialogue around how can the COG, Community Consortium, work better over the long haul to make sure that we're not duplicating administration and we're not duplicating service arrays, but we're offering soft handoffs and integrated services for consumers that exist in both worlds. And I know that that conversation has had varying levels of starts and stops prior to me coming on board. However, the last number of months, it, the conversation had some real traction in terms of earnest dialogue. Peggy McGuire, the acting director for the Community Service Consortium, and myself meet regularly to talk about our, initially began to talk about our value around what this might look like for us to be integratedly, be more intentional about how we serve consumers and exploring the possibility of a long-term agency conversation. The long-term singularity conversation has played out to be a much more complicated conversation than was initially envisioned. And so we have put the structural comments around what it might look like to execute a merger against policy. Those on the back burner have focused on what are the things that with less effort and more success, we can control right now. And so our dialogue has taken us through looking at the administrative components and opportunities that exist for us at the moment. And the area of focus is that both agencies are within a short-term need for a new financial services director. And so we are working together on visioning for the future of financial services. Both of our existing financial services directors have been looking at procedure and policies and workload and how they manage their two agencies. And looking at how we can share across with policies and procedures, how we might be able to capitalize on if one agency is more how we might be able to capitalize on if one, uh, agency, uh, is more streamlined than the other agency, about how we might capitalize on moving that work back and forth. And around how we might, uh, jointly plan on a long-term vision for either a shared chief financial officer or, uh, at least, uh, working together differently once we bring on new financial services directors as a partnership treatment. This is also extended out to our, uh, information services area where, uh, we are looking at, again, shared resources. The, um, Community Services Consortium may be, um, locating some of their servers into the COG area in Albany as they are looking at real estate speeds for ballast. So if they're shifting their server space already, we may sort them here. And it is also stretched out a little bit into our human sort conversation about how we can, uh, within each to do recruitments, et cetera. But, uh, we have also provided some expertise. Uh, the COG just added some HR resources over to the Consortium about on kind of a situation they were navigating because between both agencies, we only have four and a half HR people total. And being able to leverage each other's expertise and free up a little bit of elbow room when you need to, it has been very, very helpful. Um, pleased to, uh, that through these conversations, it was like, I can only speak from my shoes, but the, um, my, the COG Board and our regular working group is, has expressed interest in some comment about us gaining new traction around this conversation. Um, and have kind of relaxed the need for, uh, the amount of oversight that was happening to let us kind of grow with this and keep us apprised of what's going on. So I'm really, really energized about how we might be able to streamline some work. Um, and more importantly, our, uh, conversations around the future of possibly co-locating and getting the program areas involved with each other so you can better depth of understanding of which of our consumers, our crossover consumers, where we can serve them better. Uh, it's very, very exciting. So I'm paused for a moment because I normally talk a lot, those of you who know me very well. And just see, do we have any, exists?
I just want to say that I'm very happy, um, for, uh, for the tenor of the conversations between the, uh, Council of Governments and the Community Services Consortium. I, I think that, uh, focusing on the practical, uh, both the internal administration functions and on the, um, intended outcome, a better service to all of our, um, residents of the tri-county area, uh, but especially Benton County, um, is, uh, um, is what I want to see. Uh, and I think there have been some real positive changes already, uh, in terms of, uh, the collaboration and I look forward to seeing that work deepen as move forward. And the pace seems to be very, um, practical, um, especially given, uh, all of the other pressures that we're facing this time.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner.
Pat? Yeah, um, Ryan, your comments about, uh, looking at the admin type functions and, uh, for, uh, in most cases, two, uh, two fairly small organizations reminded me that, uh, Benton County just merged our, uh, natural areas and parks and, um, fairgrounds, events, folks. And I think in this case, it wasn't, uh, uh, so much, um, saving money or, or a financial push, but just to make one decent-sized department out of two small ones and so that there was, uh, some backup for the, um, directors. Um, and, uh, so I'm encouraged that, uh, this is proceeding. And I think, uh, early days of our conversation was, well, look at the low-hanging fruit and, uh, and back office, uh, type functions that, uh, um, both organizations do and see if combining them, um, might, um, make a stronger, um, stronger organization and, um, for, for both. So, um, keep us posted on that and, um, I'm encouraged with your, uh, report here and, um, looking forward to more, um, good news along these lines.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate the comments. I, I also appreciate the recognition that, um, you know, sometimes doing the right thing does not necessarily mean having a, a smaller price tag for it. Uh, that not everything is about saving money. And, uh, sometimes there's collaborative efforts to have a higher price tag up at the beginning for the cost of efficiency and better service later. But I will certainly keep you apprised of how that shapes up, um, so that everybody knows how that looks. The only other comment that I would have is, since this is, uh, my first time coming in front of you all as forum, is I would certainly appreciate or solicit any feedback if there is information that you would like on the regular quarterly updates to make sure that I'm meeting that need with our report. Uh, I'm happy to take that information offline and that I will turn it over to Curtis who can talk about our veterans program.
Thank you. Uh, Curtis, the floor is yours. He might be frozen. Curtis, can you, um, hear us? We cannot hear you. Yeah.
Looks like he might be freezing on us.
Yeah, bad timing. I know that that just happened to me, so, um, I know exactly how it feels.
So I would say that...
Go ahead.
Say that we do have some information in the report around, uh, veteran service in Benton County. Um, Curtis is always great about providing, um, realistic intervention. Talks about the amount of money that has been recovered by the great work of, uh, his program. Um, and, uh, we are also in discussions about whether or not there is a better way to visually relay this information more to come on conversation. It's a, it's a bit premature to really unveil that at the moment, but we will, um, certainly if we change the reporting structure, we will keep you posted on that. I would invite, unfortunately, Curtis is frozen on us, but if, uh, Commissioners, if you have any questions, happy to, um, take those down. And if I'm unable to field those, we'll make sure that Curtis can circle back with you, uh, offline since he'll be having some technical difficulties. Oh, wait a minute.
I'm back now. Do you guys hear me? Okay, I'm not sure what happened. So, um, again, thank you for having me this morning. Um, I would like to kind of go over the report that we presented to you guys. Um, a couple of things before I get going into that, um, I just want to share with you. Um, so what that is, is ODVA, I want to give you some updates. ODVA and the VA are still currently closed in Portland. They're not accepting any, uh, visitors there. So unfortunately, they're, they're remodeling everything and they're all working from home. So all of ODVA and all of VA are currently not in the office and they're working from home. They're thinking, um, of opening sometime after June, but because of the contract that ODVA and the VA have in Portland together, they're not sure how that's going to look. Um, they did say that they know for sure that it's never going to go back to what it was before and normal business. Um, and so we're not sure how that's going to pan out in the end. So, uh, does anybody have any questions for me before I get going into the report?
The only question is, um, how that closure is affecting, um, our, um, local veteran services office here?
Yes, it is, it is directly affecting every service office and every veteran in the state. And I'll kind of go into that on each one of these reports to kind of break down how that's affecting us. Um, as, as we look at the, the first report or, excuse me, the first diagram, recoveries, uh, our recoveries are still hovering about 3.8. So we, we went up from 3.6 to 3.8. Um, but where that ODVA and the VA not being in the office, how that affects us directly is, um, the mail that the VA sends out, it goes to the power of attorney, which is ODVA, and then directly to the veteran. So the veteran is getting updates on their claims and accounts and, and all that stuff. But ODVA is, is not getting it because they're not in the office. Um, they're, they're going to the office once a week, gathering all that mail, bringing it to Salem and then having it scanned and uploaded. And as they scan and upload, that is when they adjust the accounts on our end. So it would then show an increase in pay and stuff like that. And, and they're not doing that. And so that's why the numbers are going to kind of hover around the same of, uh, of where they're at right now. And so like I said, we're at 3.8 currently. As I go to the next one, uh, recovery's trending. Uh, this one is the one that's really affected by it. As you can see, um, we're currently, uh, where's that at? We're currently at $238,000 for this quarter. Um, this is the one really where, because this is all the new monies that are coming in and because they're not updating that, that's where we're really affected by that. Uh, the last couple of quarters where we, we were pretty lucky though because we did get giant retro checks for numerous veterans, which put our numbers up and beyond where they were previously. So that was nice. Um, and so now if we go on down to the next one, claims, we actually, with COVID and, and working remotely, we were actually able to file more claims this quarter than last quarter. So that's a plus for our veterans. What we're doing a lot now is because as we've seen, not a lot of veterans are reaching out to us because of COVID, we're reaching out to them. Uh, we're diving into files, looking for things that have been updated, veterans that we haven't spoken to in a while, and we're directly calling them and reaching out to them and setting appointments and seeing if there's anything that we can assist with and help them on. So that's kind of one of the things that we've really been doing. Um, and then if you look at the diagram for interviews, uh, our interviews are, again, a little bit down, but with our claims being up, it just shows that we're, we're processing more claims for less veterans. And so that's a good thing when you're circling back around and trying to connect the dots on some, uh, claims that were either denied or new updated claims that are coming through the VA system. Just recently, they, um, for Agent Orange and Vietnam veterans, one, uh, disease bladder cancer was not, uh, ever on the presumptive list. And now that has been approved and now it's the long process of it actually being written into law. And so that's, that's actually going to help quite a few of our veterans. Just in my short time here, I've dealt with many veterans without and they were denied, denied, denied. And now we see a way forward. We're just waiting for that law to be approved. So that's really a summary of, of where we're at right now. Like I said, the negative is ODVA and the VA are not in office and not able to upload everything, but we are still serving our veterans. Um, I do want to give a couple of positive highlights though. Um, those positive highlights are with the Board of Veteran Appeals, when a veteran has a claim and disagrees with what the VA has decided on that, they have the opportunity to do a hearing for the Board of Veteran Appeals. And our region has decided that we're going to do, uh, tele-hearings for the, for our whole region. And so we've actually, throughout the region, a lot of the other regions are not wanting to do this. They're kind of waiting for COVID to kind of go away and then get back to normal business. Well, our region has said, no, we want to do everything we can to facilitate these claims going forward. You know, we, we want to help them as best we can. So, uh, we're actually doing two to 300 hearings a quarter, um, which is double of what all the other regions are doing. So that is huge for our veterans. Should be moving them forward. That is, that is great news. Um, the other positive I'd like to highlight is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Can I jump in for a sec? Um, I don't know the AdVA region's, um, Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. So, uh, is that Lynn Benton Lincoln as it is for the rest of the Council of Governments or is it another grouping?
So our region actually, uh, counts for Oregon, Washington, Idaho and Montana. So that's how it decides us.
It's a VA region rather than an, an Oregon region. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. And then the other thing too, the other positive is the VA is still allowing type signatures. So when, when doing a claim for a veteran, you don't have to see them face-to-face. We don't have to mail them the forms to be, uh, wedding signed. The VA is allowing us, because we're power of attorney, that if we get approval from the veteran, we're allowed to type their name in and submit that. So that's, that's a huge thing for us. Um, and then the third thing that I would like to highlight is the VA is now going full bore in their exams where previously they weren't seeing veterans because of COVID. Now they, they feel comfortable with the protocols and now they're going 100% back to the C and P exams for our veterans, which allows their claims to move forward and, and process through. So that's where we're at at this point.
I would also like to thank you for including in your report, uh, the section on service to veterans and, uh, the referral to other, uh, Council of Government programs and, um, other partner programs. Uh, that is helpful to me, uh, just to see that, uh, the veteran service office is now serving, uh, as a node, uh, and helping folks navigate to other services.
Yes. We, uh, we, uh, monthly, we do our VetNet meeting where we all come together and really focus on specific veteran cases and do case conferencing and try to really find a means forward for those veterans depending on whatever they're facing.
That's great. Pat?
Uh, yeah, Curtis, uh, you, you mentioned offices closed till June. Is, do you feel like that's a firm, uh, date or, uh, might that get, um, revised, um, to, to open up sooner if, if things, uh, um, shape up as far as COVID this year?
We're hoping that it would be revised and moved forward, but, you know, the, with this pandemic and everything changing, I think everybody is really seeing a different way to do business. And, and so really I think we're looking back at ourselves and, and wondering, how can we be more proficient? How can we provide a better service to our veteran going forward? We've been pretty successful, I feel like, uh, doing these phone and Zoom interviews with our veterans. Um, you know, they're not having to come to the office. Um, the, the negative of course is ODVA and the VA being shut down affecting, um, it's not necessarily affecting a claim, but it is affecting our numbers. And so that is actually one question I asked ODVA in our last meeting with them is I said, uh, are, are you guys going to be reaching out to the counties and sharing this with them? And they said that they're going to think about it and they might reach out to the counties. Um, just because our numbers are so, are, are not changing as drastically as we want them to, or not going up as much as we want, they're really going to stay, stay pretty even. They're not going to go down, but they're, they're surely not going to go up at this point. So, so we're hoping that they can figure out a process, um, to, to, to fix that because right now they have to get every piece of mail in hand and scan it person and then upload that system. So that's, I'm not sure how they're going to do that.
All right.
I think that's a question that's likely to come up in the context of the Association of Oregon County Veterans Affairs Committee because it is something that affects all of us across the state. Um, and it's important to be aware of, especially as we've moved further into this legislative session. Uh, the other question I had for you, um, I'm sorry. I just, uh, forgot my own question. Are there other questions from Commissioners? Nancy?
I have a question. It's not related to veteran services. I don't know if this is a good time or if I should wait a little bit or...
Go for it.
Great. Um, so my question is about, um, in the, um, information that you guys sent us, uh, it mentions the Census 2020 Complete Count Committee. And, uh, there was mention there of limited... 2020 Complete Count Committee, and there was mention there of limited staff time plus COVID-19, and basically the outcome was that efforts were more limited than originally planned. And I was just wondering if you could speak to the piece about the limited staff time.
Well, I can certainly take a shot at it, Commissioner. Our planner, Steph Nappa, was the staff member assigned here, and our job as the COG was really to coordinate a lot of the response, and what we had was some troublesome access from the various communities in terms of their staff time, being able to do the outreach and get things moving. Under the circumstances, I think we did, we were somewhat pleased with the results that we had, although Steph provided a greater overview and some recommendations that I would be happy to provide you as well, should we take a larger role in this the next time around. Obviously, there was a considerable amount of challenges with trying to do this during COVID, and there were challenges at the national level as well, where late in the game, the timeline was escalated, and then it was de-escalated, and then it was re-escalated. So there was quite a bit of work in there. And then, of course, specifically for the Benton community, the impact of COVID on the student population was definitely taken into account in a problematic way. We're not entirely sure what the final counts are going to be at the federal level yet. They are still ironing that out in terms of how they pair up the administrative counts with the physical counts. So there's probably more to come on that front. But specific to your question, I believe the staff time, both, there is a recommendation that if we do this again next time, having full dedicated support from the COG to kind of keep everything moving forward is a recommendation being provided by the person who did the work this time, and that a lot of the challenges were at the local community level in terms of the staff were available to go out and make physical contact.
Pat?
Yeah, I'll follow up on that, but the turmoil at the federal level, I think it's even more important than ever to take good notes on what worked this time, what the recommendations would be for next time, because who knows what kind of notes will be coming from the federal level 10 years from now, and maybe a little like COVID, well, states here, you're kind of on your own, or, I don't know. So I would really encourage the debrief notion from this time around to whoever's in that position next time has some guidelines to work with.
I did recall my veterans question, and it has to do with the burn rate of funds, and whether or not we have managed to get onto a more regular spending level so that we don't have a lot of funds left over at the end of the fiscal year.
Yes. So right now, we're talking about onboarding another Veteran Service Officer and bringing them on to kind of help with those funds. As one of our Veteran Service Officers moves towards retirement, we want to have them on together as that other individual gets trained. That's probably the biggest hurdle that we have currently right now, is working remotely and training somebody new in this job. So we're kind of putting it off for a little bit, but I think we're going to be moving forward with that now. And then moving forward, we still, ODVA is still allowing us to roll over this year funding, so once we get kind of set with that, then we're going to kind of put together a plan, advertising and stuff like that, that's going to help us learn through that.
Excellent. I know it's just a constant focal issue at ODVA and with some of the legislative liaisons, so I want to stay on top of it so we know what's going on. Thank you. Sounds like a good plan.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for either Ryan or Curtis? Well, with that, thank you very much. Appreciate the report, and we'll get back to you if we have any comments about what we want to see in future quarterly reports by email directly to you, Ryan. Curtis? Moving onward to item 4.4, we have Under Sheriff Riddler with us to discuss the Notice of Intent to Apply for the Bureau of, I can never remember what it is, Justice Assistance, 21 Second Chance Act Pay for Success Initiative Grant. And Greg, take it away.
I really don't have too much to comment on this, except I pulled it from the agenda for the same reasons I explained last week. I did not feel comfortable that the timing and the effort was going to be sufficient to review the information on how the grant was going to work. I received some very enthusiastic information from Captain Devaney, but I also received some information from other people that I was checking with that felt that it didn't quite feel right, and I think that's probably the most specific I'd like to get. And it just felt like we were trying to push it through really fast without a little bit of due diligence, I guess the word would be, to vet that grant out to see if it was going to do what Captain Devaney thought it was going to do. And so I pulled it from the agenda, and we're going to look at possible future similar type grants, but at this time, I didn't feel comfortable going forward.
I understand the logistical concerns, both internal and with respect to partnerships that need to be more fully developed. I was just hoping that you might give us a little bit more information about the intended outcomes of the proposal itself, and how it fits within the context of the larger criminal justice systems improvement work, so that we could understand what the intent was, and then think, just in the nature of understanding direction better. So I understand that we are not ready to discuss a specific Notice of Intent right now with the intent of approving it. And I really appreciate you coming.
No problem. The intent was to have a alternative housing for people that may be on pre-trial. That was the intent, and also a way to contact them via cell phones or other modes of communication, mostly cell phones, to remind people to show up for court in a coordinated effort. Now, for pre-trial, we let them out with a piece of paper saying you need to appear on this date, and there is some, as you well know in our surveys, that there's a lot of failure to appear warrants out there for people who repeatedly fail to show up. We would be able to at least give them a better opportunity to receive communication besides just a piece of paper, and also if they had issues with housing, that the housing would possibly be available for them to live there, and they would try to get some services in regards to their situation, which caused them to be in custody in the first place. The issue that I came up with is that it's not exactly clear how that would work with this grant as pre-trial. It was more of a, I'm not going to be able to articulate this very well, but I apologize. It was, it didn't appear to be more criminal justice related to me as much as it was for people that were suffering from addiction, homelessness, and other aspects, although it did have to do with people post-conviction and post-incarceration, which to me could be interpreted as pre-trial, but it's not exactly the same in criminal justice. And that was some of the struggle I had with it. I don't know if that's articulated well enough, but it didn't seem to exactly fit the qualifications of the grant, and I could not overcome that feeling that it's, I just don't, I think it's not designed for pre-trial.
Got it. So it was a little bit of a square peg into a round hole in terms of the call for proposals that came from BJA.
Well, you say it much better than I do.
I've written a lot of proposals over the years.
And that's it. I felt John was very diligent in finding this, but he proposed it in such a way, and it just didn't, it didn't seem like it fit for pre-trial, and that's what he is looking for, and more than it is post-conviction or post-incarceration. And I was like, I'm not sure it will, but of course, we could go ahead and do it, but it didn't feel like it was the right thing to do, and I couldn't overcome that.
Got it. Okay, that is understandable. I think that the intent is what I really wanted to hear about, and I applaud that to improve our resources for pre-trial services. I think that that will help smooth some of the challenges we're having in our local justice system with the failure to appear rate, and hopefully change the perception of Benton County as such an easy place to get busted with no consequences.
That would be good.
Yes, that would be. So I hope that we will be able to identify another grant opportunity that will allow us to invest in this area. As I understand what Captain Devaney is proposing, there are, I think Lincoln County does do more of this type of work already, and there are other counties that do have robust programs. So I look forward to learning about, more about the model, figuring out how we can fund it.
Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions from, yes, Nancy?
Hi, thanks for coming today and talking with us about this. Is this an ongoing or repeating grant? Is it open every year?
That, I don't know. I didn't read that. I'm going to take a look at it right now, so if it looks like I'm reading and looking at you, that's exactly what I'm doing.
Okay, sure.
Looks like it can be reapplied for, going through a lot of government...
Sure. Well, I'll say the main reason I ask is I'm just curious if there will be another opportunity in the future for us to apply for a similar grant, if we aren't going to apply for it now. And in the meantime, you know, is there a way to come up with a different program that could better fit the intended use of that money? You know, right now, as many people know, homelessness and all of that is a big issue in our community and in most communities, and we're struggling to, I don't want to say deal with it, but help those individuals. I know we have some congregated, non-congregated sheltering in campsites. People who go to those have to pass a background check, so there is a, I would say, a gap for individuals who have felonies, and these people who are suffering from substance use issues. And then places like downtown Corvallis suffer. You know, we really don't want to send the most, I don't want to phrase this as worse, but the most vulnerable people and who are most likely to cause problems, you know, we don't want to be sending them into the bushes in parks in downtown. So I'm sure I'm preaching to the choir on this. I'm just trying to figure out ways that we can address that problem. I'm not sure if this grant in the future can help address that problem, just trying to connect the dots here.
I did indicate, or I did read in there that, yes, it is, you can apply for it in the future. It appears to be ongoing. And they said they will reexamine new grants on and see the timetable, but yes.
Okay, great. And I, you know, I hate to leave money on the table, I'll just, I'll say that, but it sounds like you have your reasons.
I think that with respect to the post-conviction issues, I also am quite aware of that issue right now, and it was really highlighted by the city of Corvallis is clearing out of Pioneer Park. And when they had folks apply to reside there after reducing the number of spots available, they discovered that many were not eligible because of records. And I know that in Lane County, sponsors provides a very robust program of housing for those with felony records, and it would be wonderful to have that kind of capacity here in Benton County. But we can't try and do everything all at once, and so it's just a challenge to try and figure out how to do what, when. But I do expect that the HOPE Advisory Board will be focusing on this issue in the context of their plan that they'll be bringing to the Board of Commissioners and to Corvallis City Council, because it is a real issue. I think the other challenges that the programs that the sheriff's office runs in that arena are really for folks that are coming out of our state prison system or out of our jail, and often the folks that we have in the community might have felony records that are older, that come from other places, and so they don't fit into that pipeline, so to speak. And so we do need some sort of support or service, housing service, that addresses the needs of that population that aren't necessarily connected to our local criminal justice system. So that's just another need. So good, thank you for highlighting that, Nancy. Commissioner Malone, do you have a question, too? Okay. Anything else on this topic for the good of the order? Thank you, Greg, for coming and sharing your concerns and thoughts on this topic, and I look forward to seeing future proposals to address these issues. And I really applaud Captain Devaney's proactive problem solving, and we will find the right grant opportunity here sometime in the near future, I hope.
I hope so, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to departmental reports and requests. Our next item of business is 5.1, Discussion and Decision Regarding Updates to the COVID Emergency Leave Policy and Related Memoranda Agreement with ASME. Tracy Martineau.
Well, as you recall, this is a topic that I brought to our quarterly meeting, or excuse me, my annual meeting last week, and I think that the topic was discussed in great detail. There haven't been any changes since then. I would share with you, though, we do have a tentative agreement in place with DCDSA at this time, and I think we're hours away from having one with ONA. They've indicated that they would respond today. So hope to be bringing that back to you as well. I do have a question, if I would be bringing that back to another regular meeting, or if that would be put before you in some other way?
If the content is substantially similar or identical to this memorandum of agreement, and the policy, I would assume it would be the same that underlies those memoranda, I would think that we could do that either under old business or consent counter. Joe?
That's correct, Commissioner. We could certainly do that. Tracy, this is kind of out of the ordinary for us to bring an item to this meeting that we call information sharing, which is what we're doing today. We like to try and focus board approvals in their first and third Tuesday meetings of the month, if at all possible. So I would try and target one of those meetings first and foremost. If there were timing issues surrounding these other agreements, we would try and insert it into another potential meeting, but we like to gain these approvals as much as we can during the first, I am third Tuesdays of the month. Commissioners, also, another potential option is assuming that the agreement is identical, if it is identical, the board could approve those other agreements. You could actually give the board chair authority to sign those other agreements potentially as well. That's not ideal, but that is another approach that you could take today if you were so inclined, acknowledging, however, that it sounds like we haven't gotten one of them back at this point.
So I can respond to the DDC agreement? So I can respond to the DBCDSA agreement is identical except for the name of the association. The ONA is identical except for the name of the association and the reference to time off is PTO or paid time off versus sick leave.
Okay. Discussion? Or are we ready for a motion, either specifically as written or, um, uh, amended as Joe, uh, was indicating?
I don't have any further questions.
I can, I can make the motion. Um, should, so should I read what's in the packet or just say, and then as amended? I'm dismissing the amended piece.
I would say, um, if you want to bring back the other two memoranda to a future meeting, uh, you don't have to amend what's in the packet. But, so it's, it could, it could go either way, Nancy.
Oh. Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to get it on the table. Um, I move to approve the updates to the COVID emergency leave policy and related MOA with ASME.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Okay. Um, all in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
So I suggest that we bring the other memoranda forward, um, either as old business or, um, uh, on the consent calendar, um, at our next business meeting.
So Commissioners, I apologize if I overlooked something submitting the agenda checklist, but my intention in submitting this checklist was to cover both the MOA and the policy. Not sure if, if that was revised or maybe I wasn't clear in my communication.
It is indicated in the packet, um, to, uh, approve the updates to the COVID emergency leave policy and related MOA with ASME. Is that, um, I'm sorry, I may not have, um, heard Nancy's, um, proposal, her motion correctly.
I just read it, what was in the packet. Sorry, I'm trying to switch back and forth between the two screens.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just read the one that was in the packet.
So that, that covers both the leave policy and the MOA.
Tracy, are you feeling like the board needs to provide additional clarity through the form of another motion?
I may have misheard it. I only heard the reference to ASME and maybe I just missed it. So.
Um, perhaps, um, Erica could tell us what she heard, uh, as the recorder?
Um, I heard the, the wording of, as in the packet with the leave policy.
Okay. It was my mistake. I apologize.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification, Erica. Okay. So, um, I believe we are finished with that item of business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay. Um, we have, uh, some time now for information sharing, and that will be followed by our executive session under other. Uh, so, um, I would like to call on one of my fellow commissioners to begin that information sharing. Um, Mr. Weiss, Commissioner Malone?
Uh, I've got a couple items. Uh, we have an email, uh, that came in Sunday, Klaus Kuderman, uh, about, uh, uh, bitten green and concerns about parking and use. And, uh, wanted to, like, uh, their first choice was, uh, you know, you know, an actual meeting at the site within, within the next few weeks. And, uh, raising the question how, how we want to respond to that or, uh, we want to have one commissioner, um, um, check that out or, or if, uh, well, two or three want to, um, be involved.
Um, I would recommend that, uh, one of us take the lead, uh, rather than all three. Uh, and, but I first, uh, would like to share that if it hasn't already been. I, my intent was to share it with, um, Gary Stockhoff and with, uh, Lori and Lynn, um, to, uh, address it because I know that all three of, well, at least the two of them, Lori and Gary, have been, uh, involved in this topic, uh, for quite a while. Um, so, uh, I, my proposal is that we get staff input and then, and I think I'm frozen. Oh, no, I'm not. Um, and then, and then move forward with a strategy to address the issue. Um, and frankly, uh, it may be an issue that, uh, Brian Lee needs to be aware of as well. Joe?
Uh, Commissioners, I am not aware of the, uh, letter that you are discussing at this point. So, uh, you know, from my standpoint, if staff has not been given the opportunity to address it, uh, we should be able to have that opportunity. Uh, certainly with Lori, uh, leaving her last day this Friday, uh, she's been the one that's been most involved and most instrumental, uh, working on this issue over time. So what I would do is get, uh, Len involved now. Uh, and we could also, uh, plug, uh, Gary into that. Uh, but I do think, uh, we need to ensure that though at least those two staff members are involved. I think if the board, uh, wants to have involvement or feels like you need to have involvement, I think one commissioner certainly, uh, would suffice. Uh, but, uh, we really need to turn this over to, uh, Len and Gary, uh, from my standpoint.
Okay. I, um, I just forwarded that email on to staff. Um, and, uh, this is something we haven't discussed as a board, uh, yet this year, but typically the role, uh, uh, one of the roles of the chair is to respond to those email messages that we all receive. I'd be happy to, uh, put together a short response. But if moving forward, um, we want to have one of us take, uh, a leading role, um, Pat, are you interested in playing that role?
Uh, yes, I'd be willing to do that, but I, I think, uh, your clarification of, uh, having the staff, uh, who's been involved, uh, previously, um, to reengage and then, uh, as appropriate, uh, um, get me involved. And, uh, and not, uh, on the, on the first go around.
Sounds like a good plan.
So Commissioners, I can take it from here. Uh, Commissioner Ozeroff, if you want to go ahead and respond. And then I will have, uh, I need to dissect this a little bit. I've just glanced at it now and I'll work with, uh, Len and Gary to get involved. And one of them will take the lead, uh, on engaging. And then Commissioner Malone, we can certainly, um, uh, invite you or keep you up to date, uh, after we meet, however you'd like to handle that. Uh, I'm open to.
That, that sounds fine with me, Joe.
Sounds good.
And I had a, um, different topic if we're through with that one. Um, Zan, I, um, suggested that, um, um, I don't have the date here, but, uh, Alarica, uh, Josh Kvit, uh, uh, contacted me and I suggested that because of your involvement with the broadband issue that, uh, he, uh, contacted you and hopefully it has done that. And, uh, um, the issue was, uh, Alarica has done, sound like significant work with Oak County, uh, extending their, um, broadband service areas, um, through Alarica's efforts and, um, I think, uh, in a phone conversation with, uh, uh, Josh, he indicated that that was Alarica's first venture into government, uh, contracts. And, um, they must have been encouraged because he contacted me and so, and then I, um, sent him over to, uh, to you. But, uh, just wanted to, um, make the rest of the group know that, um, there may be something in the works. Uh, I, I, I don't have any more detail as far as what they did or I, when I get the chance to talk to a Oak County Commissioner and see, um, from their, uh, point of view, uh, how this has worked out.
Sounds good. Um, uh, Josh Kvit has indeed been in contact with me. Um, and I told him about the, um, broadband action team that is being staffed by Rachel Maticus, um, through her contract work with Lincoln County and by extension of the four county economic development, um, service area. And, uh, so he, and I told him that the, uh, point people in terms of the, some of the specifics of, on various different proposals, uh, for Benton County, uh, was Catherine DeValle from the Economic Development Office as well as, um, Mike Corwin on contract with the Council of Governments. So he was going to, uh, reach out and check in and make sure he knew what, uh, was going on in that context. Um, I expect that I will continue to be in touch with him. Um, they happen to be my service provider as well. So, uh, there's kind of a, a double communication there, um, that, a flurry that day. Um, the, uh, other, uh, contact I would, um, mention with respect to broadband was that I got an inquiry from David Dowry, um, in his, uh, with his hat for the Educational Services District for Lynn Benton and Lincoln. Uh, they are increasingly interested in, um, improving that, uh, last mile connectivity for, uh, students, um, all across the area. And he also was unfamiliar with the broadband action team. Uh, so I connected him with Rachel Maticus as well. So, um, all around, there is an increased interest again in, uh, this type of work. And I mentioned to both, uh, gentlemen, the, um, the engineering and marketing feasibility assessment that we are funded to undertake, uh, that will begin once we have a formal intergovernmental agreement in place. Um, Lincoln County, uh, has the lead in terms of that, um, work in terms of getting the agreement finalized. I expect it will appear before us as a Board of Commissioners to approve sometime soon. And then, uh, that we can go, they can go through the RFP process and we can begin that assessment. That will really be the groundwork for, um, all kinds of different proposals to fill the gaps, um, in our, uh, broadband service and to improve broadband service as well.
Would you, it seems like there's a lot of moving pieces and initiatives and federal dollars coming in, um, in different directions. Uh, is Rachel Maticus, uh, kind of our coordinator with these efforts or is there a coordinator?
She, she is the coordinator, uh, for the broadband action team. And then in terms of specifics and then feeding that back into and connecting it to economic development efforts, uh, Catherine DeValle is a link. Again, the COG has been involved because of the larger economic development, um, um, area for the federal government. And, um, so the grant that we received was from the Economic Development Administration. So it's, it's one of those bureaucratic areas where everyone needs to be talking to everyone else in order to do it effectively. Um, but there are also, um, grants that can go directly to service providers like Alarica or Peak or Comcast or whomever. Um, and, um, those, uh, business partners have been participating actively in the broadband, uh, action team, especially the folks from the coast. Um, and they have, uh, been able to pull in some local dollars as well to address specific needs. So I think that if our local folks, uh, the Education Service District and, um, that our service providers here in Benton County step up and become involved, there is a lot of opportunity to, um, address some of these issues head on and to be more competitive for the funding.
I guess.
If we want, if we want to have someone come and speak to us at some point, um, I would be happy to talk to Rachel and perhaps to some of the other folks involved, uh, to come and speak to us. Uh, in terms of the IGA itself and leading the work from, um, a technical standpoint, it will be Adam Lerts.
My concern is just, uh, like I say, a lot of moving pieces and making sure that, um, our efforts are as well coordinated as they can be. So, uh, getting this on to a future work session, I think, would be, uh, entirely appropriate and helpful, uh, just to, so we have some notion who all the players are and, are, are they talking to one another or, um, um, those kind of, uh, questions?
That is the intent of the, the broadband action team, the for Lane, Lincoln, Lynn and Benton, um, which meets monthly. Um, the, um, and the, the major focus of work right now is, uh, putting together a, um, mapping exercise to, um, map the gaps as we know them at this time, uh, which will serve as a kind of a jumping off point for that, um, engineering feasibility assessment. So, um, I think that a work session is an excellent idea. Um, I will speak to folks about that and, um, we will get something on the calendar. And it would be a good idea to do that before we have an IGA come forward so that everyone has more context.
Great. Uh, last item, uh, I thought our, my, uh, conversation with Under Sheriff Riddler and Captain Rogers. It seems like only yesterday, um, it was yesterday, but, um, uh, was, uh, uh, real worthwhile effort and, and kind of, uh, but, uh, most of the time looking forward, which I think is, uh, appropriate as we, uh, will have a, um, a new sheriff and significant changes in, uh, management and, and law enforcement, um, folks. So, um, I really appreciate that. And I intend to, um, continue those conversations.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Weiss?
Thank you. Um, I too had an opportunity to meet with, uh, Under Sheriff Riddler and, uh, Captain Rogers yesterday. And I, I thank them and appreciate their time. And I feel good, uh, about the direction, uh, the Sheriff's Office will be taking moving forward. Uh, let's see, last night I had, uh, the choice of three different, uh, meetings overlapping, onto which one to attend, uh, between the Monroe City Council meeting, the Aloma City Council meeting and the, uh, Community Health Centers Board of Directors meeting. And I attended and participated in the CHC, uh, Board of Directors meeting. Uh, lots of good information shared there. Um, happy to hear that they're doing a lot of work, uh, with our rural communities, um, uh, with diabetes. And it sounds like they are, um, achieving their target numbers and helping people get their diabetes under control. That's great to hear for our communities. Um, they're doing work in addressing, uh, systemic racism and racial inequalities. Uh, we talked about how the, the board will define, uh, diversity and inclusion. Um, and there was some conversation about, um, the realization of a, what a colorblind approach when it comes to allocation of vaccines. Um, what effect that could have on communities of color and some of our more vulnerable communities. Um, the colorblind, uh, colorblind allocation framework could perpetuate and or exacerbate existing injustices. Um, so we might hear some guidance from CDC in the future on that. We'll see. And then, uh, lastly, the big thing that struck home with me that's super easy that we can all do is just make sure we're getting enough vitamin D. Um, because they're finding out that if you, at the time you come down with the virus, if you have good levels of vitamin D, that does make a difference. So, um, enough Oregoniums. We do not get enough, uh, vitamin D. So everyone run out and get your vitamin D. And, uh, that's all I have at this time.
Ds and Ds.
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, well, this is the first Monday evening, uh, or first last Monday of the month, but I have not attended the Community Health Centers meeting in, um, a couple of years. So thank you, Commissioner Weiss, for taking over, um, that particular meeting. Um, and that should leave me more available to attend other, uh, council meetings if, uh, we see that there are things that really make, um, sense for us to be aware of, um, on the city dockets. Um, I, last night, attended a Living South Town meeting, um, I last night attended a Living South Town meeting for South Corvallis focused on South Corvallis concerns about community efforts to assist the unhoused population. There's a lot of sensitivity down here in this part of the community about being the most frequent geography to provide services for the unhoused, along with downtown. And it was a very peaceful meeting, I would say, and I think that there were some good engagement between the organizers. The Living South Town is a project of Dev Northwest that started about three or four years ago to provide South Corvallis residents a voice in terms of planning for South Corvallis, and particularly in light of the urban renewal district. The meeting was co-hosted by Councilors Mon and Lytle, who represent the east and west sides of South Corvallis divided by Highway 99. So there's always a lot of food for thought. I think that that meeting will probably provide additional input that could be useful to the Hope Advisory Board as well as they move forward to continue the long-range planning for city and county on housing issues. I'm losing a little bit of track in terms of who I've spoken to, but I did have a good meeting with the new mayor for Monroe, Dan Sheets, a couple of weeks ago. He has shifted the Monroe City Council meetings to virtual meetings now in order to expand the reach and the capacity for folks to be engaged and involved. For any of you that have been to Monroe, their meeting space is quite small and very cramped, and especially in COVID conditions, I would think would be a challenge. So that is a big shift. They also have been facing some real significant staffing challenges. So in order to help with Monroe city business, they've been getting support from Harrisburg on some of their administrative work and also from the Council of Governments. And I'm sure that Joe is more in the loop because he has been speaking to their acting city manager, I think, on occasion as possible. But I think that we have a real opportunity and an opening to improve relations there in a variety of ways moving forward. And at one point, we talked about having staff that work in Monroe and with the Monroe community get together and have a little bit of a brainstorming session about how best we can provide better support to that community and that city moving forward. I also wanted to mention that I have been chairing a Willamette Criminal Justice Council Subcommittee on Law Enforcement Mental Health Crisis Response. We just had our second meeting yesterday, and it was a good session in which Chief Hurley, on behalf of the Corvallis Police Department Albany and presenting Sheriff's Office data as well, presented data on mental health calls and outcomes. And the Samaritan Health Services folks shared their numbers on mental health clients and how they show up in the emergency department and on the psych ward, and some of the challenges that are being faced by both systems. One of the gaps that we became aware of in the course of that meeting was that we don't have anyone on that Subcommittee from the Sheriff's Office. And I know that Under Sheriff Riddler is still with us. So Greg, I would love to talk to you about that. We need to fix that and bring someone in from the Sheriff's Office to represent the, especially the jail dynamics when it comes to mental health issues, because that has to be part of any systemic fix. But the goal of that Subcommittee is to put together some sort of a strategy to improve our mental health crisis response. And it's a broad conversation in which Oregon State University is a critical partner, as well as Samaritan Health Systems. And the first thing we need to do in our next meeting, in addition to getting data from the perspective of Oregon State University and Benton County Mental Health, is to put together a clearer goal statement, because there are several different real big challenges that are faced in the criminal justice mental health nexus. And we can't solve all of them. We have to be clear about which problem we're solving and how we're intending to do that. So that conversation is progressing well. We'd like to, in that Subcommittee, put together some recommended strategies in a timely enough fashion that they can help shape some of the budget conversations at the city and county, which means that we need to act fast. So that is exciting work, but it's also a huge issue area that we're not going to be able to fix. There are a lot of state regulations and laws that constrain some of what we can get to here locally. So that's been taking up quite a bit of my time lately in terms of a focal issue area.
And then, yes, I would like to get that information from you and have a discussion with, definitely participate in the Subcommittee.
Thank you. Much appreciated. And Danielle said she'd be happy to follow up with you as well.
Great. And is Joe, Joe, I've been asking for that Monroe interim city administrator, we'll talk to them too, because we have not been down there since the last one was there and will want to revisit that relationship as well.
Sounds good, yeah. Joe just sent a note that he said he'd be back in a couple of minutes.
I'll send him an email, so I'll reach out to him that way. Thank you.
Okay. I don't, I do have one other item, and that is that we wanted to talk about the dues statement that we received from the Association of Oregon Counties. Last year, we did not pay the full dues. We only, we picked and chose among some of the optional fees, and I don't know whether you all have that in front of you. We did receive an email from Teresa Farley about that. I personally have mixed feelings about the way the dues are, I don't like the dues structure. That is a major topic within the Association of Oregon Counties. We'd like to revise it and streamline it and simplify it, because the, all of us, most of us benefit from most of the work that's done by our lobbyists at Association of Oregon Counties, and we'd like to have everyone share in the expenses of providing those services. But for this year, we do have the option to pick and choose, and I know that Pat, you have some feelings about that. Would you like to take us into that topic?
Excuse me, I'll start it off. Let's see here. I would definitely support the effort of streamlining this. It's quite a, quite a menu. And I vaguely remember the discussion from, yes, a year ago, and what's the lottery defense fund, and some of these things get started, and are they, are they still active? Or is it just kind of inertia that they stay on the, on the list? I mean, there's 21,000 general dues and then over 8,000 of voluntary dues. And I, you know, some of the land, Federal Land Management Subcommittee, that's not a very big amount. I guess all the trust land, forest land type things add up to $1,300 or something like that. I would question how much we get out of, and I wish Annabelle was here, because she's been connected with those for a long time and has a better sense of, you know, being at the table kind of question. And my question was, would be, well, does it do, does it do Benton County that much good to be at the table when their groups are driven by Southern Oregon, Eastern Oregon counties? But, so I'm, I guess I'm flexible on that. I just would question how much good we're getting out of those groups.
I understand, and I, the way those particular groups are structured and the way the dues are structured evolved primarily in the 90s. They have not been updated very much since then. And I, my preference, as I mentioned, would, moving forward, be to see the AOC Membership Committee and its Budget and Finance Committee change that formula so that they are not called out separately, and they don't have specific functions, but they are more beholden to the overall agenda of the body rather than a specific subset of Commissioners that has a very particular agenda. So, but that said, at this time, my preference would be to, I don't know, either to not pay those optional forest-related dues, given our feelings about them, or to just pay the whole dues package. And I would entertain a motion whichever way the Board prefers to move.
I have just a comment, and I regret that I did not think of this earlier, because this would have been a great question to ask Gina or somebody, but I'd be interested to find out how much of this work that is funded by these optional dues has actually been able to be carried out with COVID, and looking forward to the next year, how much of that work we'll be able to, again, get done, because that could affect my decision as well. You know, if not, yeah, if they're not able to get the work done, then we might, you know, might not be needing to give them the funds.
The way it actually happens is that all of these dues get pooled, they get pooled into the general AOC budget, but there are restricted pots of money for a couple of these items. The forestry work has shifted because a lot of that was spent on lobbyist time, and the lobbyist arrangement has changed. I think there has been a little bit of savings there, but I think that most of the work has continued to move forward in some way, shape, or form despite COVID. I think that, you know, it's a philosophical issue. We took a philosophical stance last year in terms of not supporting some of those voluntary assessments. We could do that again, or we could go ahead and just pay the full dues statement with the understanding that the whole system is going to change moving forward.
Sure. You know, I think it could make a statement also to say, we're not, if we don't, we're not going to pay the optional dues because we are looking forward to this streamlined or, you know, approach that makes more sense. But honestly, I'll say, I don't have a strong opinion one way or another. I see merits of both sides. So I guess I can be convinced by my fellow Commissioners.
Pat, are you speaking? You're on mute.
I clicked on it. The veterans dues, do we have a sense what, what that buys?
That buys a big chunk of the staff person for the Veterans Committee at Association of Oregon Counties. Last year, that was Andy Smith. This year, it's Lauren Smith. No relation. But the, yeah, it's the staff effort for all of the Veterans Services work that's being done. And that's one that the Association really clearly just wants to roll into the main part of its dues structure. It's a core piece of the advocacy that AOC does in both the state capital and federally.
Okay, thank you. And then the PERS $2,600, what are we, what are we buying there?
It is advocacy on behalf of the PERS system from the county perspective. It's, the agenda's a little fuzzy, the way that the dues are calculated. They're not calculated based on just how many PERS numbers the county, each county employs as an organization, but the PERS members in the county, so Benton County, that would cover all, our dues are based on OSU population and other public entities, as well as the county staff. So, but in terms of the lobbying work, that's typically taken care of by the Governance Committee at Association of Oregon Counties, and it's focused primarily on the impacts of PERS decisions on counties as organizations. So we have carved out at the Association of Oregon Counties, a path that seeks to preserve as much benefit as possible for employees in order to retain and support our retirees, but then also to try to minimize the expenses to counties moving forward in the long term so that it doesn't make us go broke. So that's been a pretty effective line, I would say, that the AOC staff has walked on behalf of counties. So it, again, supports the lobbyist staff. In this case, it's principally been Rob Bovet in the past that work on this issue.
Okay. Well, my inclination is to do the general dues and then on the voluntary would be the veterans and the PERS, and add those two voluntary lines to the total and skip the rest. Video lottery, which we did not pay last time with the notes. My memory and the notes in the chat are correct. And then, and then the, the three timber type voluntary dues. I wouldn't feel comfortable not paying those, both as statements of, I don't think we're getting, that Benton County is getting much out of those, and to encourage the streamlining of the dues structure.
I would, I would be happy with that, but I'd like to add back the video lottery defense. It's only $553.73. The video lottery funds are one of those budget line items that every other bright idea that appears before the legislature tries to raid. And I'd like to preserve our economic development programs' access to those dollars and not see them eroded. So just as a token of the importance of that to us, especially as witnessed over this last year and the way we've worked so well with our economic development staff, I'd love to continue to support that.
Okay. Are you ready for a motion?
Commissioners, just to interject, it would be very helpful just to go down line by line and say yes or no, just to summarize for staff, so we make sure we have it correct.
Can you do that in the context of your motion, Pat?
Maybe. I think I'll separate them out and then do the laundry list and then make the motion. So general dues, 21,000, that's a yes. Public plan funds dues, 1,700, no.
Well, that's, that one is not optional.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Public plans funds dues. Um, public lands funds dues, $1,700, yes. Video lottery defense funds, um, $553, yes. Um, federal lands management self-committee dues, $249, no. PERS, um, uh, $2,654, yes. CF D L C, $571, no. CF D L C, special voluntary assessment dues, uh, no. Veterans funds dues, $2,086, yes. And, um, if that's, uh, acceptable, I will make a motion to, um, for Benton County to, um, pay what I just, um, laid out.
I think I'd like to go backwards for just one moment, um, and the council of Forest Trust Land Counties dues, um, that with the double asterisk next to it of $571.29, um, is required for membership in, uh, that council, um, and if we want to have any vote or any say or any possibility for influencing direction of that group, uh, we need to at least be, um, have a voting, uh, seat at the table. I am completely fine with not paying the special voluntary assessment for that.
Okay. So, um, now my motion is for, um, main dues, $21,401, uh, no. So, I will go with the yeses, maybe, maybe that's the best way to do it. Um, and then, um, I'm following the list. Um, public lands dues, $7,310 is yes. Um, uh, PERS, uh, $2,654 is yes. And then, um, I was saying, um, CF D L C, $571, yes. Um, veterans dues, $2,086, yes. And I, I don't have a total, but, um...
Commissioner Maloune, it's just to clarify, uh, one that, uh, you had a dialogue about with Commissioner Ogierow was the video lottery defense fund dues. Does your motion include that one or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. My, um, pre-order, you do, but, yes.
Can, can I just sum up? So, I think what I heard was, Pat, that you're moving to pay all the required dues, um, plus the voluntary dues for PERS, the veterans fund, and the lottery defense fund?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, CF D L C dues.
Okay, and the CF D L C dues, okay. Second?
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Nope. Thank you very much. Uh, all in favor, uh, indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appreciate that. Now, we can, uh, have staff move forward to, um, go ahead and pay the dues. Uh, I do not have anything else on my list at this time, so, um, but Pat does, and then, uh, anything from Joe?
Uh, I'll, I'll make it short, but I've been, um, quite a few conversations around the vaccine, um, rollout and, uh, I, I hope, um, by this time next week or maybe a little bit longer that we, we have more clarity. I think one of the big questions is, uh, well, um, kind of the accounting portion of vaccine, so many are coming into the county and then, uh, well, how come we're not using them all? And, uh, well, I think we are, uh, part of the, if all you have is, uh, doses coming in and, uh, and how many people have been vaccinated, I think it's a little more complicated than that, and there's a distribution system, and, and I, I don't have, uh, uh, all the other categories that, that should be included to give a, a clearer picture, but, uh, of our, uh, situation, uh, the best I can do is, well, there's a, a lag in reporting of two, two, three, or four days, and, uh, so, uh, I think, uh, part of the best thing we can do is, uh, what, uh, we're doing at Research Stadium and the Lynn County Fairgrounds is, is do some, um, at least medium-sized events that are successful and, uh, get into a kind of a routine, and, uh, then some of these, uh, questions will go away because people are getting vaccinated, if not personally, then they know somebody, and that, uh, the system is, um, up and running. But, uh, I, I hope we get, you know, a little more clarity on that fairly soon.
I can tell you that that was actually a major topic, um, starting Friday and through part of the weekend, um, and due to some community frustration about understanding fully who was in the 1A group, um, and, uh, our staff has been working incredibly hard to get to, uh, any vulnerable homebound people and their caregivers, um, and to that end, made some significant, uh, changes to our web materials, um, uh, over the weekend in order to address that. Um, the, um, part of the challenge with the vaccinations and getting them out is the fact that, um, here in Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln, we are holding back the second doses. Uh, we're not getting everything out the door right away. In, um, some jurisdictions, they are, um, using all vaccine that comes in the door for first doses rather than holding second doses to match those first doses. Uh, that's one of the challenges. Um, the other is, as you mentioned, all of the logistics. Um, and, um, our, AOC is doing a great job, um, but even they are having trouble keeping up the communications between all of the, the vital partners with Samaritan and Oregon State University. Um, and it's very difficult, in particular, to keep, um, both the top leadership, um, CEO level and us elected officials, um, up to date, um, with what the decision-makers and those on-the-ground roles are doing, especially since the information changes within a day, um, very rapidly. Um, but I did just speak to Doug Boyson yesterday, um, and have been speaking with, uh, Joe and, uh, with Suzanne about how best we can address the need for us to be more informed because of the fact that we received so much constituent feedback, um, and we're trying to figure out what kind of an update would be most effective and what the content of that update should be, um, both trying to balance our need for information, but, um, their need to take as little time as possible out of their, uh, actual work to get vaccines in arms and understanding that information can go stale really quickly. So, we talked a little bit about some kind of standardized statistics that they could put together for us about the previous week and the accomplishments, and then plans for the week. And anything looking forward would be subject to the caveat that it all depends on actually receiving vaccine allocations, um, and finalizing any logistical arrangements. So, it's really very much a work in progress in terms of, um, of communications and, and trying to make sure that we are as informed as possible, uh, without, uh, burdening, uh, the folks doing the work.
Part of it, I mean, I say, uh, just, um, be patient. I mean, people are doing the best they can under the situation and, uh, that, uh, well, like I said, hopefully in, um, not much more than a week or 10 days, that we have some, um, successful, um, like the Research Stadium Mass vac, uh, events, and, so we can talk more about that and what, what, what is happening. But, um, it's, uh, I, um, think our staff's doing a great job, and, again, under trying circumstances, and, uh, hopefully, um, things will, uh, get a little more routine fairly quickly.
Commissioners, the topic of communication regarding our vaccination efforts was one of the primary items on my information sharing piece, so I'm just going to go ahead and step in right now and, and try and bring this conversation around to having the board inform me as to what would be helpful for you relative to communication, uh, the type, uh, the frequency, uh, and anything else. As you know, uh, during the original, uh, response to coronavirus, we ended up having two meetings a week, uh, basically, uh, those were taking advantage of our Tuesday meetings with the board, and then we implemented another meeting on Thursdays that we called our policy meetings, and those were primarily meant to keep the board up to date and also to receive direction from you, uh, if staff, uh, in fact, needed it at the time. So, what I am wanting to do is Suzanne and I were supposed to be meeting at 11:30 this morning, and as you know, we're already past that, so Suzanne and I are rescheduling for later today, uh, but we are trying to find, uh, a way to meet the board's needs and others' needs regarding communication and yet balance it with the amount of time it takes to produce that. So, what would be some, uh, feedback that you can provide to me that Suzanne and I can use in determining, uh, how, what we think we can do? Uh, and this conversation, of course, involves Brian Lee as well, uh, but I'll be quiet and I would just like to, uh, hear from each of you so that we can, uh, try and meet your needs the best we can.
Go ahead, Pat.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't feel like I really need more information. It's, uh, I'm getting it out to the broader public, you know, to try to summarize the, comments I've received is, uh, like, the county is, you know, sitting on a bunch of vaccine and why aren't they, uh, you know, getting it in, in people's arms? And, uh, I, I think part of the problem is just not, uh, understanding the complexity of the distribution system, and so you can't just have, uh, well, there was 100 vaccines given and only 50 or 60, uh, vaccinations took place, therefore you're sitting on, you know, 40, 40% of, uh, of, you know, supply, and I, I don't think that's accurate, but, uh, there, there's this, uh, frustration with, you know, it was a month ago, we, we got, all saw the pictures of the airplanes blasting off with the vaccines and the UPS truck, and then a month later, uh, you know, finally getting, uh, really getting going. And, uh, so I think, uh, part of it is just keep doing, uh, doing what we can to, uh, get people vaccinated, and, and some of these frustrations and concerns will, um, melt away, but, um, so I would not, uh, burden our staff with any more communication with, with the board would be my, um, uh, thought, just, uh, get us the information, um, as you can, and, uh, definitely no more, uh, um, meetings to take up, um, staff time.
Thank you, Pat. Uh, Nancy?
I don't really, I don't have any specific requests, uh, in the context of what we're doing and, and as far as the board is concerned. Um, I'll try not to get on my soapbox too much here. My only, my main concerns are just with how the state is allocating, uh, which I know we don't have control over. You know, reading yesterday that they sent out 28,000 vaccines for, uh, school district employees, and then two paragraphs later acknowledged, we know that there's not enough to, to cover everyone in the 1A category. Uh, that's just frustrating and, um, so yes, I, like I said, I won't get on my soapbox. Um, I'm not sure if it's worth asking for, you know, if they ask us, can we provide feedback like that? At the same time, I know I'm just one, one commissioner, and that's not necessarily the whole board speaking, but, you know, it is frustrating. Why aren't we vaccinating grocery store workers? And, um, you know, I know people in my own family who are afraid of dying, and they're waiting in line, you know? Um, I'm just going to stop talking there so I don't go off too much.
Well, um, in terms of, uh, hearing more about, uh, the state order of, uh, allocation, uh, the Friday calls that occur with county commissioners, um, that are, uh, that feature typically, uh, the head of the Oregon Emergency Management, um, Department and, uh, various staff from OHA is very helpful, and there's an opportunity in that forum to ask questions and to, uh, question the logic of some of those decisions made by the Governor's Office and, and the Oregon Health Authority. Uh, so that's one vehicle to, um, both hear about some of these things as they're emerging, but also to provide feedback, and, uh, so take advantage of that opportunity. Um, I, personally speaking, as, um, as board chair right now, I, I've been getting, um, quite a bit of, uh, feedback, uh, from folks, and so I would like more information, um, but it, it may be that I'm the only one that needs it at that level of granularity at this time, um, and I could talk to you about that later, Joe, or I could just say that it would be helpful to me if, um, uh, we, we send in routine reports to Oregon Health Authority, perhaps I could just be copied on that so that I know what we've done retrospectively, and then getting a weekly update on the plans for the upcoming week would be very helpful. Um, both of those would be of use to me, um, in terms of my coordination and conversation with, uh, partners and other entities.
Uh, that's helpful, and Commissioner, what I would plan to do is, uh, when Suzanne and I meet and talk about the board's feedback, and we'll get Brian's input as well, but anything that we would send to the board chair, I'll make sure that we send out to all three of the commissioners, so you all have, uh, the same access to information and whether or not you feel like you need it or it pertains, you can, uh, disregard it if it doesn't apply, but I'd rather have you have more information than not enough.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Um, Pat?
Yeah, my image that just popped into my head is, uh, we're, we're in a line, it's the line, it's a long line, it's a line moving, uh, it's not moving very fast, uh, and, uh, it's just a frustrating situation. There isn't enough vaccine to, uh, take care of the groups that we would like to get taken care of soon, and that's, uh, the reality that we're, we're dealing with, but, uh, I think people feel better if, if they have a sense that the line is moving and that they're, uh, whatever group they're in is getting closer to, um, um, getting the vaccine. Another thought just crossed my mind, you mentioned the 1A, uh, category, uh, I'm wondering, uh, say there's 100,000 in that category, if 20, 30, 40% of them decline, are, are those numbers still look like they're pending and we're not, uh, servicing that group? Or, or that'd be a question, how that, uh, is being handled?
Well, um, counties are moving on. Um, basically, what, they, they are doing the best they can to address the 1A population, uh, but then with the Governor's Directive to, uh, vaccinate, uh, school employees, uh, teachers, um, that is the next priority group, um, that's just merging in right now. It doesn't mean that every county is completely finished with their 1A population, but the last people in that population last people in that population tend to be the hardest to get to, the hardest to inform, so it takes a lot of effort. So there's a recognition that even as we roll forward into these other populations, we will continue to vaccinate those 1A folks. And if they were cautious about it, it doesn't mean that they can't still get a vaccination. Once they're in the priority queue, they're still in the priority queue even as we move forward to the 85-year-olds and the 75-year-old band and then the 65-year-old band. So they will remain priority populations. But it is challenging, and it's a hugely challenging communications exercise. I think that that is one of the biggest things that we're learning. And as you say, Pat, there's just a very long queue and not enough vaccine, so it's going to continue to be a challenge. I would like to move us on just because we are approaching noon and have, some of us have other meetings to go to as well. We do have an executive session to hold also. So are there other, is there other information sharing for the good of the order at this time? Hearing none, I think we are ready for our executive session. And do we, are we intending to sign off again and sign back on? Do we have another link?
Yes, Commissioners, Teresa Farley has sent you another link in your email, so we will be adjourning or we will be getting off of this go-to meeting and getting on the other one that Teresa sent you this morning for the executive session.
Okay, so we stand in recess. We will be back in executive session as soon as we can log on again. Thank you.